This time I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 7th, 2014 meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At 6:00 PM we had a work session, or actually we convene as the Board of Equalization and Review. At that time, we opened at 6:00 PM. We had no one signed up to speak, and we recessed that at this time. Tonight, we have Pastor Bill from Moayoc United Methodist Church to lead us in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Heavenly Father, we stand today as our forefathers have stood before you in times gone by, celebrating our history and reveling in all the great things that our country has achieved. On this Monday night, we rejoice in the favor you have graciously given us. We thank you for the blessings of liberty for this generation and for the generations that come. We thank you for our independence, peace, and for all those who have bravely given their lives in the defense of freedom and justice. And we thank you that your gracious and provident hand has given us so much. Lord, grant that we and all the people of this land and this county called Currituck may have grace to maintain our liberties and righteousness and peace. Father God, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide the hearts of our government officials as they make decisions this evening. We seek you first and all we do together as a community through Jesus Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you and the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Bill, as always, thank you. I have, before we approve the agenda, I have two additions to the agenda. We have an amendment to the contract for Lower Currituck Volunteer Fire Department, an amendment to the contract for Corolla Fire and Rescue, and we have an exemption to the beach ordinance for the, what is the surf?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, what the ordinance will allow for is a surf competition to be exempted from the beach driving ordinance, and I'll discuss that.
For one day.
It has a 48-hour sunset provision, yes.
Okay. Need to add those to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
The two additions for the fire departments, they're for what?
I believe they're extension of the...
They're extensions of the terms of the current contract to allow for additional discussion between the county and those two departments. But it doesn't change any other term or condition of the existing contract for service.
So in other words, it just, it allows the current contract to continue until negotiations take place?
That's correct.
Okay. Need a motion for approval?
Question to accept that the agenda is written.
Have a motion with the three amended items to the agenda. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next item is public comment. But before we get to public comment, we do have a special guest here tonight that probably doesn't want me to recognize him, but I'm gonna do it anyways. We have the governor's eastern representative here tonight, Mr. Steve Keane, and I believe you've been serving in that capacity about four months?
Ten weeks.
Ten weeks. And how many days? But he's come here tonight, actually this afternoon, and met with the county manager, and we've had some very nice discussions, and he's gonna go back and carry our titles to the governor, and also an invitation for him to come to Currituck. So I don't know if you'd like to say anything. If you would, we'd certainly like for you to.
Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate those kind remarks, and I appreciate being able to meet with your county manager for a good hour to learn more about your very unique county. It's my first visit inland here, from the water standpoint, coming inland and from the waterway, and it's a very unique and beautiful county, and I'm excited about being a part of the governor's initiative to reach out to the counties east of 95. I have 34 counties that I'm traveling, and I'm trying to make each county a very unique visit and learn all I can. So I just thank you so much for allowing me to come tonight and listen. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. This time, we're gonna go to public comments. I'm gonna recognize Commissioner McCord at this time.
Yeah.
Well, I think you wanted to...
Yeah, just wanted to make a quick comment. I guess everybody pretty much knows my salary and all that good stuff. It's in the Daily Advance. I took a position as a magistrate effective July 1st, 2014. My last day was the 30th of June 2014 as a commissioner. I didn't successfully fill my term out. Magistrate position comes open maybe once a decade, and it's something I'd wanted for a long time. I, you know, attempted to put in before and kinda built my resume for it. Had I known one was gonna come up, then I probably wouldn't have ran for office, but I just wanted to appreciate everybody, thank everybody who I worked with. It was a pleasure. I hope I wasn't too much of a pain. And, you know, thank everybody who supported me. If I made anybody mad, it wasn't personal, it was business. And, you know, like I said, wish, you know, nothing but luck for the county. Like I said, it's weird. Last Friday, I left as a deputy. 14 years I worked for Susan, or 13, I worked for Sheriff Susan Johnson, and they did a little party for me on Monday, so that was, I didn't even know about it. I was trying to leave to go work for myself. It was my only day off before my new job, and I got tied into a party, but like I said, I don't wanna take up too much time. I appreciate it. I enjoyed working with everybody. I wish nothing but good for everybody, and like I said, I'm sorry I didn't finish my term. I take it off my bucket list. I don't think this guy will ever run for political office again, but nor own a golf course with my father, so those are two. But like I said, I appreciate it, and it's been fun, and hopefully I did some good things and didn't do a lot of bad things, and I'd like to thank everybody, and that's pretty much it.
Mr. Chairman. We do have a little something for you. We want to go down front and present it to you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Come right down here, or there if you want, wherever you want to.
Hope it's not a bad one.
No.
Want to present you a certificate of appreciation and grateful recognition of your dedication and service to the citizens of Currituck County. We hereby present Kevin C. McCord, Currituck County Commissioner, District 4, December 2012 to June 2014, signed the 7th day of July, and I'd like to present that to you. We wish you had, we could give you like a thousand dollar check or something. Just doesn't work.
I got a tax bill in my box on the way out or something.
Anything else you'd like to say? Commissioners or anyone like to say anything?
I'm not gonna hug you. No, I appreciate it. Like I said, you know, this is a tough job. I mean, it's thankless at times, and you know, there's a couple in the crowd who are running for the next level, and you know, these guys, I mean, just the hours that people put into it, I had no clue, the phone calls, the emails, but when I sign up for something, I try to give it 100%. If it means I get three hours sleep or, you know, or miss something, you know, it is what it is. But like I said, the opportunity, I couldn't pass it up for my family, for my wife, for my business, and it's just, my stress levels dropped majorly, so. I've even played golf twice in the last six weeks, so, but I appreciate it.
So I was simply gonna say, it's been a pleasure serving with you. You certainly have put your heart and soul into what you've done, and I appreciate that big time, and I think the rest of us will do as well. I wish you nothing but the very best in the future, and I know you'll do a good job in whatever you do, and kinda like the old saying, talking about your bucket list, be careful what you wish for sometimes. I think we all know that, but congratulations to you on your new job and best of luck. I need that.
Kevin, I remember I talked to you sometimes and say, you would tell me what you were doing, and I'd say, "Well, when do you sleep?", and he'd tell me, "Sleep's overrated." He worked very hard, he was wonderful to work with, he always had the best of county at heart, and like you said, sometimes the decisions you make are tough, and you have to make them, and you move on. He's done a wonderful job, and we wish you well, and we will miss you, and why don't you come up? And you can complain and...
I'll be here next meeting.
Which could ruin you in the class tomorrow.
If my taxes tripled, I don't think I would come up here and complain.
So congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. I wish I'll do your best. We'll see y'all.
I hope I didn't do a good job.
Thank y'all.
The next thing we have to do is Kevin sent a letter to the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, the county manager, Dan Scanlon, county attorney, Ike McCree, on June 30th, 2014, say, "I, Kevin E. McCord, resign effectively 6:30 to 14:00. At 11:59 as District 4, Currituck County Commissioner, respectfully submitted, Kevin McCord." And that requires action by the Board of Commissioners to accept his resignation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
With regrets.
Right. He's smiling and grinning now.
You heard what he said about his stress level, didn't you?
Yeah. So with that, we have a motion properly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin's McCord's seat at District 4 is now officially open. I believe the Republican Party now has to bring us a nomination to fill that seat. The Board of Commissioners can choose to accept their recommendation and fill that seat with their recommendation, then their candidate would be on, and that commissioner would be on the ballot in November. But the Board of Commissioners also has the right to not accept that recommendation and to appoint someone else who would serve until the election, so they would only serve two and a half, three months if we do not accept the Republican Party's recommendation. And I believe that they are diligently working on that and will bring someone forth maybe at the next meeting, so, or shortly, within the next two meetings.
Just to point out, you do have 60 days now from this date of vacancy to make your appointment.
60 days from?
Today.
Today. Okay, to make that appointment.
That's correct.
Okay. This time, we're now going to move to public comment. We have a couple people signed up. First, we have Mary Etheridge from Shawboro. And Mr. McCree, I assume you'll keep the time?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Mary Etheridge, and I live at 846 Shawboro Road in Shawboro. Three days ago, our country celebrated the Fourth of July. Yes, it's a day for picnics, fireworks, and celebration, but July the 4th is our country's Independence Day. In 1776, our forefathers stood up to tyranny and declared their independence. What they did so many years ago still holds true today, and we should never be afraid to stand up. These great founding fathers, in writing the Declaration of Independence, declared that government exists to support the rights of men. Government exists only through the power of the people that they represent. When a government fails to grant rights to the people and remove the involvement of the people, the people have the right to change the government in a way that will allow for the rights to be protected. Thomas Jefferson wrote, "To secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their powers from the consent of the governed." Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said.
It's part of the Declaration of Independence, I believe.
That's correct. Ms. Cameron Lowe, I think you're gonna talk about something that we got good coming up in the fall.
I sure hope so. I sure hope so. As you said, Cameron Lowe, 619 Idlet Road, and I am your county extension director, as you well know. For those that may not know, cooperative extension is the outreach arm of our land-grant universities here in North Carolina and across the country, and it is our responsibility to take the research and teaching that's conducted at those universities and deliver them to the public in our local communities where related needs exist. Our focus in cooperative extension is primarily on farming, foods, and 4H and youth development. And I'm here tonight because 2014 is a very important year for us, as this year we have been conducting extension work for 100 years across the country. On your consent agenda tonight, you have a proclamation recognizing the 100 years of cooperative extension work, and I wanted to come tonight and personally say thank you for your support of cooperative extension efforts here in Currituck County. Cooperative extension has been a leader in Currituck County in many monumental efforts for a number of years, and it's the outstanding partnership with county government that has allowed us to do those things and has allowed us to be a leader across the state of North Carolina in cooperative extension. Without a doubt, my staff loves their jobs. I love my job because every day I get to come to work and I get to help people every single day. So thank you again for recognizing this historic event with the proclamation. Along those same lines, I would like to also again invite you to the Currituck Heritage Festival and Celebration of Cooperative Extension Centennial this year, and Mr. King, this would be a great opportunity for you and the governor to come back. Shameless plug. This year, the event is being held on September 20th, and it will be at the Currituck County Rural Center, which is in Powes Point, North Carolina. We will start the event with a community picnic beginning around 12:31 o'clock, followed by an outstanding day of family fun entertainment. There will be exhibitors, vendors, demonstrations, contests, live music, and what I'm most excited about is a living timeline that will interpret the history of Currituck County and how that history is married with the history of cooperative extension over the last 100 years. So that promises to be very educational and unique. The event is free. It is open to the public. Again, outdoor activities will go from about 1:00 to 4:00 PM, followed immediately by a barn dance from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. We'll have live music during the afternoon activities provided by a new local native band, Slow Living, and the barn dance will feature the talents of Out in the Cold. So it promises to be a fun day for everybody involved. We invite you and the public to come out, and we're very much looking forward to it. Again, thank you for your support of cooperative extension work and your recognition of our 100-year anniversary. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lowe, I'd like to just tell you that the cooperative extension service touches so many people in the county, whether it's the children through 4H, whether it's the farm community, whether it's, we used to call them the home demonstration clubs.
That's right.
But I know that's not politically correct anymore, but the...
But they still exist.
Yes, they do.
They still exist.
And just the helps for living, for, you know, healthy diets and helping struggling families. Y'all do a wonderful job. I also am on that centennial committee. I haven't been able to make all the meetings, but when I've been there, these guys are really putting together a wonderful celebration at the rural center, and I encourage everyone to make sure that they get out to that and see those grounds. It's phenomenal what y'all are doing out there.
Oh, it is beautiful.
It'll be a good time hill by all.
Absolutely.
So thanks again.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. Good evening.
Our next agenda item is a presentation of an award to our finance department, but more namely, Ms. Sandra Hill. So at this time, we're gonna do another award, and I think Dan, the county manager, may want to talk a little more about this since it's one of his staff people that's done such a wonderful job with it.
I thought this was a one-on-one.
No, I'm just gonna let Dan do the talking. But you can see, it's 2012, 2013, that our finance office has gotten this award. Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, presented to county of Currituck, North Carolina. Ms. Sandra Hill, as the, I call her Finance Minister, that's our little inside joke, has done such a wonderful job, and her staff, and the county manager, that this is a prestigious award. There's very few counties that get this, and Currituck's gotten it two years in a row or more.
Since 2003.
Well, the plaque says, I thought it was more than that.
They changed it. We have so many plaques hanging on the wall, they changed, put buttons on it.
So since 2003, so what you need to do is go ask for some more buttons.
Yes.
So since 2003, consistently, Currituck County has led the state in its financial reporting and accountability and just being good stewards, and you've done a wonderful job, you and your staff and the county manager, and I'll let Dan, so I've already flubbed it up, I'll let Dan talk about it a little bit more.
This is, county governments are required of an annual financial audit prepared. At the base level, what our finance department does is goes well above and beyond preparing a basic statement and includes additional information for public disclosure about the financial well-being of the county. It is a recognition by, it's an organization, is a Canadian and United States government association. They review literally thousands and thousands of annual statements every year, and only those that reach the highest standard of accountability and disclosure are recognized with this award. It speaks to the integrity of our financial systems, it speaks to the quality of work that Sandra and her staff does, and what does it mean to Currituck County? Getting this type of recognition speaks to when we go out into the marketplace, if we want to borrow funding, we get better interest rates, we get better access to the markets because we are viewed at as one of the very few percentage of cities and counties across the country that have reached this level of recognition. Again, it speaks real high of all the work and dedication that Sandra and her staff puts in, so it's very prestigious, very prestigious. And again, since 2003, her staff has maintained the high level of standards and received it every year since then.
So you can never retire. Would you like to say anything? Sandra, would you like to say anything?
Just thank you for your support with helping us be able to do everything and submit this for the award every year, and without your support of giving us the financial basis, we wouldn't be able to do this all the time, so.
Dan, consistent with this, wouldn't this part parcel of our change in our rating standard in boards to a standard of...
It is one of the factors that the rating agencies would look at, and yes, periodically they go back and reassess the financial integrity of a county. We were just reassessed last year, and this award is one of many factors they looked at, and our rating actually improved.
Great job. Thank you.
Fantastic job, Mr. Chairman.
I do have to back up a minute. I did not close the public comment period, and as always is custom, I didn't know if anyone else that didn't get to sign up wishes to speak. You, okay? Ask you please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Owen Etheridge, 169 Maple Knoll Road, Shawboro, NC, and before I begin, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Commissioner McCord and commend him for a job well done and best of luck in his future endeavors. Also, to what Cameron Lowe presented tonight, I'll add one last thing to that. It used to be the Agricultural Extension Service instead of the Cooperative Extension Service. And then to Ms. Hill, who I had the pleasure of working with for many years as a commissioner, I commend her for a job well done. I'm coming here tonight reluctantly, but I need to address a couple of things that have been raised from this podium for several years, and it concerns the case of the conditional rezoning in Shawboro. And I must set some things straight about that. I was accused the night the public hearing was being held of having some nefarious plan with Mr. Cartwright for the rezoning. That was absolutely false. It was proven to be false, and I apologize to the people of Currituck County for a family feud that had erupted and brought the county into that family situation. Two weeks ago, or two meetings ago, I was accused of providing Commissioner O'Neil with some type of report, which I did not provide Commissioner O'Neil a copy of what I understand to be a public report. I was also, have been accused, or it was said, it was strange that I met with the Technical Review Committee, the TRC, when they were reviewing the application for this conditional rezoning. Since it was not a special use, I was perfectly within the rights of a commissioner to sit in, or anybody else for that matter. I came at the request of the applicant. As an observer, I only asked one question, and that was to clarify something I didn't understand. So it was nothing strange about it, and I had attended other TRC meetings for other citizens that had an application pending. But what really prompted me to come up here tonight was an allegation made two weeks ago concerning my father, my deceased father, who's not here to defend himself, but I'm not gonna let his name be besurged. I will defend him. It was said that he owned the property in question. He did not own the property in question, has never owned the property in question. So with that, I will just say, remember one thing. There's been pictures that have been shown up here of the recycling center in Moayoc. When that was built, that road was level with the bottom of that fence. When it was widened, the road was widening, it was over six foot of fill put in to elevate that curve. That's why you can see inside of that facility today. So I ask you to consider what's in front of you when it comes back to you maybe, and do what's right for all citizens of Currituck. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing and move, public comment, and move to our public hearings. First one is consideration in action for PB 1410. Bradley Smith requests a conditional rezoning of 20 acres from agricultural to conditional district, single-family mainland on property located in Moayoc on Dustin Lane, which is located on the south side of Tolls Creek Road, Tax Map 14, Parcels 18J, 18K, and 18L, Moayoc Township. Mr. Woody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a conditional zoning request, so it is a legislative matter before you tonight, so no sworn testimony is required. You can see on the aerial photograph, the 20-acre parcel is off of Tolls Creek Road. You can see to the west is Panther Landing Road, and then to the southeast is where the library site is. So this is an area of land in between the Moayoc Library and Moayoc proper. Property's currently zoned agricultural, and obviously on the map, it's kind of an island of agricultural zoning at this point. You can see effectively, other than the small parcels that surround this tract, everything at this point is zoned single-family mainland, which is the request before you tonight. Our land use plan designates this property as rural. However, the recently adopted Moayoc Small Area Plan designates this property as limited service. As this board is aware, limited service generally allows residential densities at low to moderate intensities with a range of about 1 to 1 and 1/2 units per acre. This particular request is 40,000 square foot lots. It includes open space, so it ends up being a density of less than 1 unit per acre. You can see the tract itself again, as Chairman O'Neil stated, is 20 acres including the right-of-way. It ends up being 13 lots. On the frontage of the property, along Tolls Creek Road, there were two initial lots that were created as part of a family subdivision. Those two lots are included in the total of 13, and those lots will be incorporated into the major subdivision, and open space will be provided for those lots. You've got six acres of open space. This is the rear of the property. You can see the open spaces at the back. That back portion of the property is wooded primarily, so it's really a good, kind of naturally lends itself to being open space. This particular subdivision is served by County Water. Will have on-site septic systems, as the board is aware. The soils aren't the best in Moyoc, so in this case, they'll have to go out and have a lot of evaluations done prior to bringing forward a subdivision.
Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir.
Do we have somebody here representing the applicant tonight?
We do.
Okay.
We do, yes, sir. The county's wetland inventory shows that there may be wetlands on this tract. The surveyor who's prepared this plaque says there are not. Again, that's something that'll be worked out when the subdivision proposal comes in. I suspect if there are any wetlands, they are most likely at the back of the track where the wooded area is, so they're probably going to open space regardless. This is a conditional zoning request, so what you're seeing tonight is 13 lots with a cul-de-sac at the end. That will be what needs to be built if this rezoning is approved. The applicant did include three conditions. One, this subdivision will be limited to residential uses, the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, and that property lines and road lines may be shifted to accommodate stormwater drainage, utilities, wetland issues, or other UDO requirements, which is pretty typical. As is required for conditional zonings, a community meeting was held for this rezoning. It was held on April 15th at the Moyoc Library. Did have some attendees there, and they had questions regarding the development, including size of properties, types of homes, home sizes, property drainage, and impacts to surrounding properties. The summary of the community meeting should be included in your agenda packet, and of course, the applicant should answer any questions you may have on that. The Technical Review Committee has reviewed this request and does recommend approval. The TRC's approval is based on the request being consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Moyoc Small Area Plan, and it's compatible with the existing proposed uses surrounding this property. Two things I want to cover from the staff perspective, as you consider this rezoning, or this conditional zoning tonight. One is, is our ordinance ordinarily, or typically requires a farmland buffer. So if you develop a subdivision, and your lots are adjoining land that's under cultivation, you'll need to install a 50-foot buffer. In this particular case, the adjoining lots to this tract, at one point, were farmed, or were in agricultural use. Currently, they are not, so there's really nothing to provide a buffer for. So the way we've kind of approached this with the applicant, is that if those lands continue to not be actively farmed, when the subdivision plaque comes in, and staff will not require the agricultural buffer. Of course, if they are back in cultivation, then the buffer will need to be provided. So I just wanted to put that, that's why you don't see a buffer on this particular subdivision plaque. So that's one thing. The second thing is that street connectivity. You can see that this particular tract is surrounded by essentially 10-acre lots. There were, this was adjoining 10-acre exempt subdivisions, which as you know, North Carolina State statutes allows a owner to cut tracts into 10 acres of land, and they are exempt from the subdivision process. Ordinarily, when that's done, the 10-acre tracts are done to accommodate typically residential houses, as you know. In this particular case, our ordinance does require connectivity. Of course, the tract itself is kind of long and narrow, and really doesn't lend itself to connectivity. So another consideration is that when this subdivision plaque does come through, if one of those 10-acre lots is, you know, being developed for a house, or is in the process of having a house built on it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to connect a 13-lot subdivision to somebody's 10-acre tract of land. So staff would most likely, at the time of the subdivision, if it's obvious that there's nothing to connect to, would probably look for either not having a connection, or maybe having some sort of pedestrian easement or access for a future connection to what was once known as a Currituck Reserve subdivision. So my point is, there's not a lot to connect to, and we just want to kind of put that on the record at this point. The planning board did recommend approval of this request with the two conditions. At one, if the surrounding land becomes agricultural use, the farmland compatibility buffer needs to be addressed. And two, to allow reduction in the connectivity requirements at the time of preliminary plats submitted, with the possibility of establishing a pedestrian access to the rear of the property, should that land ever go into development. So with that, I can answer any questions the board has.
Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Woody?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just one. You did say it's conditional zoning, correct?
It is conditional zoning.
And profit has been made for 40,000 square foot, so that's locked in. Forty thousand square foot.
That's locked in, that's correct.
Square foot lot size.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions? This time, I'll open the public hearing. We have Cameron Taber signed up to speak. Ask you, please restate your name and address for the record.
My name is Cameron Taber. My address is 608 Tolls Creek Road, Moyoc. I came here tonight, I'm not so much opposed to what's going on with him building, I'm probably looking more at what's really going on in the county with the building that's going on, and I'd like to ask a couple of questions to this board, if I could. Mr. Chairman, may I speak, may I address Mr. Woody, please?
Yeah, I guess so.
Mr. Woody, if, there's two houses that's been built, and they're existing. If that was, if this was asked of the entire thing from the very beginning, would that have passed muster?
Those two houses that were created along Tolls Creek were, and I'm gonna expand on an answer, which hopefully is okay, were family subdivision lots. So when those lots were created under the family subdivision ordinance, they were obviously exempt from a number of things. When the applicant came in to bring for, and no, as a family subdivision, you can only create lots on road frontages and have to go to family members. When the applicant came into the major subdivision, staff's position was that those family subdivision lots be included in all the major subdivision calculations, and be treated like major subdivision lots. And the applicant has agreed to that in this case.
So the answer is yes?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is that there's land on either side that could be developed in the future, and that's been addressed here. And that may or may not happen. But my concern is, all the growth we've got here, gosh, we all like growth, that's great. But I'm gonna present a scenario, and if you've, I pass my three minutes, please feel free to have me sit down without prejudice.
Keep going.
We have a lot of growth going on in this county, and it's gonna grow, and we may grow ourselves to death. And this is the scenario that I'm gonna put forth. Mr. Scanlon, I'm gonna step on your turf a little bit. We have, we're attracting people from the Virginia area, and they have jobs in Virginia, and they're coming down here, and we're educating their children at a cost of $2,000 per year, Mr. Scanlon? Yeah, we'll call it $2,000. And if we're not collecting $2,000 in taxes to educate those children, it's not sustainable, folks, it's just not. Mr. Scanlon could probably run those numbers and tell you when the next tax increase is coming, because we're paying to educate Virginia's children. And we're doing it through this building. Now, if we're attracting industry in here by doing it, then that's great. But I don't see us, our industry and our jobs growing at the same rate as our population. And I see that as being detrimental to all of us here in this county, and I'd like for you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? And just to, I just want to make one comment to what Mr. Taber said. Currently, the growth patterns going on in this county are a direct reflection of community meetings that were held throughout this county, and the board adopted the land use plan that the citizens at that time said they wanted. And we have asked Mr. Woody to start putting together another...
Study.
Study for the land use plan to make some of those changes. But the current growth patterns are reflecting what that land use plan was that was done in 2006.
2006, it was adopted.
It was adopted, and so it's getting outdated, and it's time for us to start looking at that again. So, point well made, and the commissioners are listening to that, and we are going in that direction to start looking at the growth pattern. So, thank you. With the applicant, Mr. Smith, would you like to say anything?
First and foremost, thank you guys for your time this evening. I'm a small local builder in the area. It's the first major subdivision process I've done with the county over here. Most of the jobs that we bring to the county are all local. Most of my guys, Max Heaton and Air, Scott Williams Electric, Ralph Bowen, Framer, most of the people that we work with, we do employ, live in Currituck or surrounding North Carolina counties. I'd say 75 or 80 percent. I didn't do the math on the number, but we bring those jobs here. The homes we're looking to put in there are nicer homes that are fit what we're trying to do in the county, probably 250,000 to 350,000 range would be the high end. The two that we have there now, we do have listed at 279. So we're trying to get something in a market that people can buy. We are going to restrict those to some degree, with some minimum square footage requirements, brick. We're trying to build a nicer type home. I don't know if any of you had a chance to see that, what we've got going there now. So we're looking to bring quality to the county, tax revenues that come with that, and the home sales and the property taxes that go with those properties, that would help offset some of what Mr. Taber recently spoke about. And that's really all I've got.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve PB 14-10 due to its consistency with Moyoc Small Area Plan, density allowable for the limited service classification, and that the request is reasonable and in the public interest.
You have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Under New Business Memorandum in Agreement to Partner with Wildlife Resources Commission for Water Lily Boating Access Area, Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, through the budget process, the board talked about setting some funds aside to help improve and embellish and further develop our public accesses to waterways. We have an opportunity to partner with Wildlife Resource Commission. They have been doing a study of the public boat ramp that they own, that's off of Water Lily Road, not too far down from the Coin Jack Marina. It is, the area is experiencing some erosion, and they have a plan to come in and put some riprap to protect the shoreline. The county has been meeting with them. We have an opportunity to build a boardwalk and a public access area there, possibly gazebos to enhance that, so boats can enjoy the water there, to fish, and take advantage of water without actually having to launch or retrieve a boat there. It seems to be, this project is consistent with what the board vision was during the budget process. In front of you tonight is a memorandum of understanding that Wildlife Resource Commission would like the county to execute, whereby the county is agreeing to fund the boardwalk. WRC will do the design, the permitting, actually bid the project, manage the construction of the project, and see the installation of the project. Our responsibility would be to fund the costs only associated with the establishment of the boardwalk and gazebo. The riprap will be a state responsibility. Parking lot area that will have to be expanded, it is our responsibility to fund the expansion of the parking lot. Our long-term commitment would be just to maintain the facility by cutting the grass and maintain the trash, as we do with other, but that, those conditions are consistent with other agreements we have with them at other public boat ramps. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Anyone have any questions?
It's about 250 linear foot of public boardwalk that will be stopped.
What's the cost associated?
Our cost would be just under $100,000.
I'd like to make a comment to that. Three and a half years ago, coming back from Raleigh with Dan, he and I took a side trip, and we stopped in Edendon, and looked at the wildlife ramp that had been built there with the access to wheelchairs, and for people to enjoy the Chilwan River waters there. We also went downtown to the waterfront in the town of Edendon, and on Pembroke Creek. We further came through into Pasapatankey County and Quamons County, and we looked at boat docks that have been put in there, and launch facilities that the state had provided those counties. On the Little River, we went in and looked, and they had built a new launch ramp. The old one had been, was in pretty bad shape and everything, and so they had repaired it. And as we moved back across the counties, we stopped and looked at those around the Elizabeth River, Camden County, right on the river, and you all see it when you go into Elizabeth City. It is really utilized by people there to fish off of, and especially to have the gazebo out there. And so you see some people who are infirmed, not necessarily in wheelchairs, that actually use it. And I said to him, why can't we do this? And for that reason, they have worked diligently, and we have gotten the grant and working with WRC. And I think this will be a real boon for the people of Currituck. They're at Water Lily because it is a well-used area. As Commissioner O'Neil knows, he drives past it all the time, on his way back and forth to the house. And I think it's gonna benefit everyone, and with a few picnic tables in there, it would just be another great recreational area and water resource for the people of Currituck.
Yes, sir. I think we have a slide, you should have a slide at the site. Sort of difficult to see, you'll see the existing boat slips is to the top of the slide. The area to be riprap is just down from the boat ramp around the point, and continuing down across the site is the riprap. And then you can see in the darker piece, right in the middle of that, that is a public access, and then 250-foot, linear foot of public boat ramp, excuse me, of boardwalk. And then we, the intention is to be able to gazebo probably on the point. So this would give the general public the ability to enjoy the waterfront without actually having to access the boating access.
Mr. Scanlon, yeah, Mr. Scanlon, you indicated that what our contribution to this is gonna be, what is WRC? What will the state be matching?
I do not know the cost of their project. Our project is estimated to be $94,000. I do not have in front of me what they're anticipating their cost to be. They're gonna move forward with the riprap whether we partner or not. But it's an opportunity for us to include the design, they'll handle the cost of the design work, they'll actually do the engineering, they will get the permits, they'll oversee the construction. And the timeframe is, depending on what type of CAMA permit they have to get, whether it's a minor or a major, we should be able to go under construction in the later part of the winter and have the facility available for the public in the spring. But to be specifically, gee, I don't have the information they gave us what their cost is for the riprap.
Okay. And just one of the comments during the course of our budget discussions, this did come up, that there were funding, there was funding available through the state that we could utilize as a force multiplier to augment the mainland's ability to enhance our access to water and water-related activities. And I think that is, I think that's smart of the county, quite frankly, to try to utilize the state matching funds, because that'll help us do a lot more than we could on our own. Thank you.
I do believe they also, the state is gonna, once it's built, who's gonna be responsible for the upkeep? That remain ours?
We will be responsible for the general maintenance, trash removal, the general appearance, and will be responsible for the boardwalk. They'll be, they still own the property, they're responsible for the riprap and erosion and items associated with that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Petry?
Two questions. I'd like to think that we would pay, we could pay for this with occupancy tax?
Yes, sir.
Second question is, if somebody knocks it down, can Army Corps keep us from rebuilding it?
I don't know if this is a project that's gonna require Army Corps permits.
Well, thank God. Thank you.
If that was the case, they wouldn't let us build this to start with.
Well, hopefully, the riprap will go out there so far that you can't hit it if you're going south.
Being since you brought that up, you should see, we met a couple of weeks ago with Congressman Jones's office, and he has already responded back to the county. The congressman has engaged the Army Corps, the Colonel with the Army Corps, and has requested us to forward a letter to the Army, the Colonel requesting, again, his assistance with this is the deck that's at the Veterans Park that you're referring to that has been damaged and right now is not publicly available, and it does look like at this stage, we might have some movement finally with the Corps about getting some cooperation on being able to repair that facility.
Imagine that. Yes, sir, Mr. Idlet.
I know that our current land use plan strongly encourages the county to look at water access, to make access available to all citizens, so I think that, and as Mr. Griggs said in budget discussions, it was certainly brought up and discussed, and as a matter of fact, they even requested that it be added to our master plan for county projects to look at ramps and look at areas throughout the county to enhance water access, and I think it's a good idea, and especially when you have state funds that's available as well to help offset the cost, and I mean, I agree with it, so.
Thank you. Anything else? Do we need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to approve, and go forth with it.
We have a second from Mr. Petry. Okay, and the funding is coming from the occupancy tax, Mr. Scanlon?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries. Next item is board appointments. We need to appoint a commissioner to the Almar Regional Planning Organization, better known as the ARPO.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Idlet, please.
Commissioner Idlet?
I'll second that motion.
You have any further nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Congratulations.
Condolences. I haven't, you hadn't heard me say anything yet, have you?
Yeah, well, that's why I'm moving on before you have a chance to think about it. Next item is appointments to Whalehead Preservation Trust. We have Mr. Andy Newbern has submitted his resignation, so he can serve on the game board, and we have Josh Bass, who was asked to be replaced as well. Do you have anyone, Mr. Griggs?
I am not ready at this time to make an appointment, but ask for it to be tabled.
Ms. Gilbert?
The same. Mr. Bass has agreed to continue to serve until a replacement appointment is made, and...
Okay, so, Mr. Newbern is in Mr. Griggs' district, and Mr. Bass is in Moayak, so if people are in those districts or interested, I'm sure that they would certainly like to hear from you. So with that, we'll move that to the next agenda. Next item is a consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion for approval, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Commissioners report. Mr. Griggs?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Martin?
Fireworks going off at 9:10 over at Whalehead tonight, if you can make it.
Yep.
We'll look out the window.
Mr. Idlet?
Yeah, as we were talking about boating access, I passed around some pictures this afternoon that I took Sunday morning at 7:00, the parking and ramping situation at Knights Island. As a lot of you know, have a lot of residents that live over on the Outer Banks that are not Currituck County citizens or residents that live here in Currituck County, but they own homes over there, and they certainly contribute to our tax base within this county tremendously, as we well know. 55% of the taxes that come to this county comes off of that strip of sand over there. We have got to do something with that parking mess over there, and as I showed you guys the pictures this afternoon, I know there's some property that is available over there that may be, I mean, I don't know what the answer is. I've struggled with it for a year now, and as I see it, the only thing that we can do is ask fishing wild, not fish and wildlife, but the wildlife resources, folks, I guess my, one of my questions was this, Mr. Scanlon, generally, does the wildlife resources, if you enter into an agreement with them, will they purchase a piece of property? Is, do they have, just like the boat ramping facility at Water Lily now, who bought and paid for that piece of property?
This is one of our original ones. WRC actually owns that property. The boat ramps we've done in the last probably 10 years, the county has acquired the property, and we partner with WRC, who provided the engineering services, installation of the boat ramps.
Okay. Well, I just wonder, is there, is there programs or grants available to purchase the property? If so, I would like to inquire and look into that and see, to see if we could find some state money to help purchase a piece of property to expand that area. There's certainly no property close to that area to expand the parking. So, I mean, the only way to solve the issue is to put in another ramp at a location that would be probably much better and more convenient to get to deep water than the one that's there now. Just food for thought, I'm bringing it up, public comment, so, or commissioner's comment. So, I know Mr. Woody and I talked about some stuff one time, and it seemed to be, he thought there was some grant monies available that could do certain things. I don't know, I'm just asking.
How about if we asked the staff to check into it and report back?
Whatever, yes, that would be great, and yeah, and come back with something, and because, like I say, there's a prime piece right now that's certainly available, and I think's available, and that would make a wonderful facility for that, but anyhow, that's my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Petry?
Are you looking to do at Knights Island what we just did at Water Lily? I mean, without the gazebo and the walkway, you're just looking for a parking lot?
Yeah, I'm looking for an expansion of the parking lots, however, there is no property within that vicinity that you could do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I was, there's another piece of property that's available that actually is on the water, and it's three acres in size, and it's within 100 yards of Knights Island Channel Deep Water, which is a much better access facility anyhow, that could possibly be up for sale soon. Yes, they come and dug the ramp out, yes, they did, yes. The problem, the problem is parking. There's the problem.
Well, I've, Mr. Idlet and I have talked about this back and forth over the last couple of months, and there is an issue there. The issue really boils down to, is it people using the boat ramp that are parking there, or is it people who are parking there and then going over to the Outer Banks? Because there's a lot of just private vehicles there, so we got to work through all that, and we need the staff to investigate to see if there's anything available. Do you have anything else? Mr. Petry? Ms. Gilbert?
No comment this evening.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I was involved with the staff in the preparations of the hurricane that, at the beginning, we thought it was going to be a whole bunch of nothing, and then after we, there are certain timelines that once the hurricane hits a certain space, you have to declare an evacuation before a certain time, and anyways, the hurricane was supposed to not be really that much, and it was well past the evacuation time, and then we got the phone call, we were on conference calls where it had gone to the west, and we had some pretty, I won't say tense moments, but we were concerned, but the purpose of my comments is to say thank you to the staff. They did a wonderful job, and you can tell that they've been training and practicing and working and getting ready for any event that would happen, and each person on the staff knew their job, knew their position, and they did a wonderful job, and I just want to tell Mr. Scanlon to please relay that to everyone involved. They just did a wonderful job, and thankfully, we were spared the brunt of the storm, because I would have certainly been concerned about the lack of evacuation in Corolla had it come up there with the winds and the surf on the ocean there, but we were blessed, the good Lord blessed us again, and I'm thankful, and just want to commend the staff. Do you have anything, Mr. Scanlon? Yes, sir.
I'd just like to add, Mr. Scanlon was out of town, and I'd like to say, Mr. McCrea, you done a fine job, buddy.
Like the chairman said, it is a very well-trained and experienced staff in emergency management and other agencies that fell right into place.
I mean, you had emergency services, you had EMS, you had the fire departments, you had the sheriff's department, you had the fire marshal, you had people that don't even work in those particular emergency positions, but they have a job to do, they showed up, and they did it, and they did a wonderful job, so.
Mr. Chairman, before we close, we still have some more business, do we not? The fire department stuff?
That was part of the consent agenda.
Consent, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me, all right.
Yeah, that was done.
I need to read, I didn't know it was consent.
And the one-day exemption for the surf.
That was all part of the consent, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to make one comment, because I was sitting up that night watching, and I think the hurricane was originally forecast to come in and go over Cape Patterson, go out to sea, and of course, it went over, I looked like it went just almost right over Manio, and I've always found that weather reporting agencies, particularly concerning hurricanes, have to be remarkably accurate 24 hours after landfall.
Agreed.
That's a great note to end. We need a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Oh, yeah, let me read the reason we're going into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve attorney-client confidentiality in the matter entitled Swan Beach Corova LLC versus Currituck County and Other Legal Matters.
Make that motion to go into closed session.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye.